I'd like to call to order the workshop for the Mayor and City of Council for the month of July, as Councilman Wance to listen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All council members are present and accounted for. First issue we need to discuss tonight is the approval of the minutes for Monday. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes of June the 8th or June 13th regular meetings, or May 9th closed session?
Just one thing, the mayor was not here at that meeting, and he's not listed as absent or here.
And then I have a, on the June the 13th meeting, which is our voting session last, last month, under adoption of ordinances, there's no explanation written here. You know, you all know I disagreed with the vote that was taken earlier to strip the minutes of any detail of what happened at that meeting. I read a statement about how adopting the code of conduct would be against our town charter because of the timing of the vote, and how it would be a violation of our oath of office to vote for it because it exceeded the 96 days that were required. There's a 70-day limit in the Constitution for passing a bill once it's introduced. Since the bill was changed in its size from a, from a bill to another length bill, it wasn't the original bill that was introduced and needed to be reintroduced in order for you all to vote for it, and I-
Councilman, if you don't recall, it's reintroduced every month on the agenda.
Yeah, this bill was not reintroduced because it was changed between one council meeting and another council meeting to be two and a half pages longer than the bill that was introduced. And the minutes don't reflect anything, they just say, "The code of conduct, a motion to adopt by Sam Betty and Wance, followed by a motion by Fraser to table, with no second the motion died." The original motion was adopted four to one with Fraser opposing. Doesn't say anything about all the information that we gave each person. I got up out of this chair and gave everybody a piece of paper that explained why it would be wrong for them to vote on that, under the rules of our charter and the rules of the oath of office, which would follow the state constitution. None of that's reflected. And then further down the minutes, there is a omission of any detail about why I voted not to close the meeting. I voted not to adjourn the meeting because the mayor refused to let the people come and wait it all through the meeting to give comments and testimonies about agenda items. We have a provision on our, Mr. Mayor, on our agenda that people can speak in just a moment about non-agenda items, but the time to speak about agenda items, if you look at our agenda for tonight, is at 9:15, unless, it was the same last month, but you adjourned the meeting without taking any public comment, which resulted in quite a great deal of consternation from the people who waited all through our meeting in order to be able to give their comment about the adoption of these unconstitutional bills.
Well-
So I'd like the minutes to reflect onto the second section, the reason why I opposed the adoption of the motion based on procedural things and the letter from my attorney, and also I'd like the, the motion to adjourn, why I opposed adjournment, because the city council would not allow public comment, which I think is not only customary, but appropriate based on the way we conduct our business.
Well, you can rest assured, there will be no public comment Monday night either, so if you want to put that into the pot, you can do that, too.
Explain that to me.
I say, there'll be no public comment Monday night either, so. We have public comments on Wednesday nights, not on Monday nights.
There's time, it says, before adjournment for people can make public comments approach the well, that's been the practice since I've been elected.
Not on Monday nights, and you were part of that decision.
I voted against the decision not to keep accurate minutes and against the decision to not allow a public comment during the meeting before people had the right to-
Is that your opinion, Councilman?
That's incorrect.
Is that your opinion, Councilman?
No, that's what happened, and an actual fact, the reason that I'm voting for that, and I don't agree with the advice of council that minutes can be a single page when that much happened in a meeting, because you cannot read through the minutes until what occurred at the meeting. The honest government would have minutes kept so that reflect if a person were to read the minutes, and I read this before as the advice of the legislature, that if you read through the minutes, you should ought to be able to tell what happened in the meeting, but you cannot do so from the minutes of June the 13th because of the omission of these-
In my opinion, this says exactly what happened at that meeting. We voted, it gives all of those.
Are we within guidelines with the minutes we prepared?
Yeah, we talked about this earlier on-
We talk about it every month.
You, you voted that your minutes would reflect the votes, the motions and the votes.
Well, I voted against that.
That's what state laws, you voted against that.
I appreciate you bringing that in the future.
But the majority voted that's how the minutes would be taken.
That's right.
And that was in November.
That's my point exactly.
And the state law, under the State Government Article, the general procedures article, says that's legitimate.
Every meeting we waste 10 minutes talking about this, and every minute, every month we remind you that that's not necessary, so it would be great if you just don't bring that up anymore, Don.
I don't think it's a waste of time to know that the majority on the council has voted to strip the minutes of any detail, and the majority on the council will not give explanation of what happened so a person can read the minutes, which is the general accepted guideline for municipalities.
Any-
And so I would suggest making the corrections by adding the language of why I opposed the adoption of the agenda, of the code of conduct at the meeting. I don't think that'll stand up in court of law, what you all did, but also I don't think that the second part of the minutes reflect why I voted not to adjourn the meeting, because people were waiting in the well to speak, and you gavelled the meeting to close, against my objection.
If you look at the agenda, it does not provide for public comment at the end of the Monday night meeting.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're wise to do that. I think it's very frustrating to the election, like, the people come out to these meetings not to be able to speak about the business that the city does that affects their lives.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments regarding the minutes?
If, I might just say that, you know, one of the reasons why we went to an abbreviated version of the minutes was because the recording that we were doing of every single thing that went on at the meetings, even when we listed in detail every single thing that was said, every motion that was, every single thing that happened, there were still disagreements about that. And so the reason why we decided to fine tune the minutes to, you know, what is required by the state, was because the verbiosity of what we had been using still didn't satisfy it.
The minutes have gone from three pages to one page, and they don't reflect accurately, Councilman Bigliotti, what's occurred at the meeting.
The recording of the meeting is very accurate, it's in your own words. If anybody needs it, they can go to the website.
I think the comment-
They can go through it, and they can hear your own words as to why you object to everything that this council does.
Well, I think that, that's, Councilman Bigliotti, for the purpose of colloquy, I would just agree with you that the only other source to find out what happened would be to watch the videos, but that's not where we keep written minutes.
Yes, sir.
The written minutes should reflect a reasonable narrative of what happened at a meeting in order for this to be an honest and open city council, and that's what, the reason I brought this up, because this is the worst case yet where it doesn't reflect any of the votes or comments made about the votes.
Well, to your point, again, the reason why we went to the abbreviated version was because we couldn't agree on what would be considered a reasonable representation of what happened at the meeting and the words.
I've noticed since you adopted this code of conduct that somehow there's an opinion that if there's disagreement among elected officials that you have to quell that and put a lid on that, but disagreement among elected officials is a normal part. If you read the attorney letter that I gave a copy of everybody, you cannot quench or quell the dialogue between elected officials, that's where government, the way government's supposed to work, not here in Tawnytown.
And if you would listen to yourself, that's not what's happening. It says right here you disagreed. Carry four to one with Fraser opposing, you disagreed.
But I had given a, I handed out a handout, and I have a copy for the public here.
We give lengthy things about half the things on here, and it's not all, just because you spoke on that doesn't make it special.
It is special, because you all violated your oath of office and you violated the charter by adopting the code of conduct last time, and the minutes should reflect that we had a discussion about that in order to be accurate.
Well, I think we've talked about this enough. Obviously, you don't agree with how we record the minutes, but it's the way we record the minutes.
Well, Councilman Sam Betty-
Something you can do about.
It suggests that if you want to know what really happened at the meetings, you have to watch the video. And I'm saying that the minutes should not do that, a different city council would respect the long settled custom of keeping accurate minutes.
We appreciate your opinion, we do.
I've been in government for 30 years, and I've never seen anything like it.
All right. Next we have time for some public comment pertaining to items that are not included on the agenda. And anybody would like to make a comment, I'd please ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
I think I only need about 30 seconds.
Please, again, just for the record, identify, here you are, and where you live.
Barbara Cook from Clubside Drive. My first comment is, it sure is nice to come to these meetings in daylight. The second thing I have to say is, I have an article here from the Washington Post from January, June 26th, I'm offering it to anybody on the council or the public, and it's two full pages, plus it starts on the front page, and it's about, the title is, "They All Want to Profit from Medical Marijuana." So see me, whoever would like to read it.
Thank you.
Catherine Adelaide, 9 Cortlandt Street. Thank you, Barbara, that's a good note for me to follow on. I'm speaking on behalf of No Cannabis in Carroll, and again, our title isn't Some Cannabis in Carroll, our title is No Cannabis in Carroll, and our position is that elected city officials to stem the drug tide need to be having a real zero tolerance on the drug issue, heroin, pot, illegal, prescription, all of it, because other people will be taking other positions, but that's a leadership role, so that's our position. It's come to my attention from some of the other citizens that Cana LLC, whom, as you know, the council, I believe minus Joe and Dawn, did not vote to send a letter of approval to that particular company to get licensed at the state. It was done with, behind closed doors, under the Open Meetings Act, you had your exception as it was real estate and legal and all that, but anyway, they have apparently begun the permit process, so a grower is officially moving toward again Tawnytown. And the last time I spoke, I did ask that the council would please include growers in the legislation, and now they're going to be grandfathered. So I'm wondering, apparently it's owned by TT Commercial, Tawnytown Commercial Association, and I'm wondering if any of you have any kind of interest in that company, and has Cana MD, has it met with, has it gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission? I'm going to try to put some of these questions in writing, and I hope we can have some answers by Monday night, and has the zoning staff, and we need to have, again, I don't like to see, I'm glad that you moved for the overlay zoning, to stop right on our historic Main Street, but I don't like the idea that maybe all of that was kind of a red herring to keep our focus off of the growers. Again, you know, recently this year in Ohio, eight family members were executed, were murdered, execution style, and these slayings, there were marijuana grow operations, commercial, not personal, commercial. So I don't want to see the beautiful cornfields of Tawnytown being turned into pot growing facilities, and I expect my county council, my city council, to do something about this, because that's what they're aiming for, and even the one in California, it all starts with all the regulations, it's all inside, nobody's going to know any better, and then now they have it growing in open fields in California. So that will be the trend, they're going to start with all the promises about how it's going to be controlled, but you have no idea how out of control this pot situation's going to get. And also I spoke with a DRE expert while I was doing the referendum petition, and he said pot cannot be used for pain management or to stem the heroin epidemic. He's a Carroll County DRE expert, and he said that's a huge misunderstanding that now we're going to solve the big pain problem.
Catherine, it's been three minutes.
Okay. And I did, I would like to remember Teresa Ann Petticord, 48 years old, who lived on York Street, who was found dead of a heroin overdose.
Thank you for your comment.
Well, I had a follow-up from Ms. Adelaide. Mrs. Cook had said that there was an article of the 26th June about profit takers from marijuana growing facilities. Did you mean to say in your comments that you have data that the cannabis facility next to Flowserve is progressing forward? Because 150 applicants put in to the Marijuana Commission for approval, but we've had no word, I've had no word about any progress in the Tawnytown growing facility that we were told we would employ 43 people. Do you have any data about that, that you're bringing to us today?
Well, I only have information that appears that they may have made a county permit application, I'm not sure of their licensing status yet. My big concern was, unfortunately, I pushed very, and you did too, to include the growers, and the council did assure me that the growers would be addressed next, so even if this one slips through, I'd still like to see the council moving forward on how you're going to contain the growing facilities, because those are still real dangers to this community, and I'm not keen to the idea that we're going to make a lot of money growing a lot of pot that's going to get a bunch of other people addicted in some other jurisdiction, so, does that answer your question?
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to make any comments?
Paul Chamberlain, 20 Monoxie Circle. A few months ago I had stopped in on behalf of the business owners to talk about parking. Has anything been done on this?
I believe the parking meters were discussed in the parking lot next to City Hall, is that correct? Didn't a decision be made on that?
Yeah, we raised the parking meters to two hours, and put up a, putting up a sign to advise it as public parking.
And then, what about the employee parking?
Well, the employee parking is still permitted on the left-hand side of the driveway coming in.
And again, see, once again, you know, I said that there was a, there was a perception that council does not want to hear or have any insight, and two reasons why. One, you want to limit the amount of time that we can speak, although you guys can pontificate all you want. And two, anytime somebody comes to you with something, it's like, falls on deaf ears, and you just take your time.
Well, you see, it didn't, because your actions that you requested were implemented.
When, I don't, I have not seen the parking meters painted black, I haven't seen this parking lot, and we've even said that if you'd like to have the business owners assist you with this-
I mean, what's our progress there? What's the progress?
We had talked about that, Mr. Mayor, we talked about asking city employees to park in the back lot like I did when I came to council, and changing the color of the meters so that it was more apparent. Most of the comments at previous meetings, if you, if you recall, were about the merchants wanting this lot next to the, the City Hall to be used for potential commerce, and so that is why I thought we all agreed that the city workers were going to make an effort to park in the backs and walk to the back down here, except for vehicles that have to stop in, like the red vehicles.
My recollection was that, since that parking lot was never full, there was no need to have all the employees parked back there. Certainly, most of the employees already do that. There's only certain employees that park there for logistical reasons, and because there's, because there's no, the lot's never full, the parking meters were extended for two hours at, at your request, and assuming that it's public parking, inviting people to come in. Now, if my understanding of our discussion was wrong, can the council tell me? I, I was under the impression that, that there was no, that, that the level of parking by city employees in the parking lot was acceptable.
And from what I remember, I think five, at least five more city employees are now parking across the street behind, or near the pharmacy, right?
Which they had been. And to counter the other point, to counter your other point, they, they will not be painted black. The reason is, since they are different from those on the street, they have to be a different color to differentiate them. The ones on the street are black, they're not enforced 24 hours, those are different color, showing that they are enforced differently, so they cannot all be the same color.
Again, it comes back to not listening and not taking the advice of the business owners. It is not inviting, you have the same amount of employees parking in this parking lot as you did before. You are not, you're not giving, there is no incentive for these business owners, I mean, you're going after business owners for, for their signage that has been allowed for years, you know, you give preferences to community, people, community organizations for putting signs out here, they don't have to follow the same regulations as the business owner, it is not very business friendly in this town.
I don't understand.
And, you know, you guys can sit there and disagree, but how many of you all go out here and talk to the business owners?
I've talked to business owners, and I've also been in that parking lot where there have been plenty of parking spaces.
And the business owners tell you that the town is favorable towards business?
I've never seen that parking lot full.
They don't, exactly, that's my, that's exactly my point.
Chamberlain, are you implying that since we had the discussion and made some changes, that you don't see any change in the use of the-
From a visibility, from a visibility standpoint, you've got to put it in the perception, in the perspective of somebody driving through town, does that parking lot look any different? Does it look inviting?
It doesn't.
It's a parking lot.
There's always spaces in that parking lot, I've never driven through town.
Does it look-
Without, yes, it looks inviting.
Okay, well-
You know, what do you want? Do you want, I think it's very inviting. I mean, it's, that's, I know for my business, I encourage my clients to park there every day.
Well, it's a little bit easier for you, because you said employment. Most of these businesses in town, they're people, they're coming in from out of town, and people look at that parking lot, they look at the yellow meters, and it doesn't, it just looks like, oh, that's off, off limits. I mean, something, you know, you all laugh about it, you know, Councilman Wance, I would suggest that you go ahead and try to operate a business in town and see how-
I would love to, unfortunately I couldn't, because no one would provide capital.
Well, but my point is this-
But if you go to Westminster, every single parking meter's yellow.
Well, then paint every, every one of them yellow, then.
I already explained to you why we can't do that.
Why can't you do that? Can you explain?
Why is that?
Because they're enforced differently.
So you have to have them painted different?
So they are different colors to show that they're different.
So they have to be by, by law?
Not by law.
Not by law.
Common sense.
Common sense.
If, if anyone would care to make a motion on Monday night to-
It says enforce 24 hours, yes.
Restrict employee parking, you're certainly able to do that. Personally, I don't know that it's necessary, but if it, if helps our business community, then I'm all for that, but I don't think it has anything to do with our business community. Marvin.
Marvin Flickinger. I've just retired the last year, year and a half, 54 years in business downtown. I've seen the best of business downtown, I've seen the worst. Right now, it's the worst, whether you want to admit it or not. I've seen the streets full of cars. You can look out to my door, during the week, when businesses should have plenty of business, there's no cars, from the traffic light to the railroad track. I've seen it many times, I think some of you have seen it. So there's no lack of parking for businesses. We've got to get businesses in here that sell something that people want.
Thank you, Marvin. Anyone else?
Kathleen Grove, 3049 Stanley Drive. Hi, I'm from YT Tawnytown. We have decided that due to the fact that there's not enough business in Tawnytown, we are going to do a social media campaign to push Tawnytown that's completely free of charge. I know there have been efforts through multiple outlets here in the city council and the City Hall employees to do things, nothing is getting done. If you go to the Tawnytown website, the only thing listed is meetings and trash pickup. If you go to the council Chamber of Commerce website, the only thing listed is meetings and a word banquet. The businesses are suffering, you know, I'm friends with a lot of the owners, and they're suffering. So we've headed up to try to make things free of charge, to get it out there, and I wanted that to be aware that, you know, this is something they are struggling with, and the town is not addressing it. So we've taken it on ourselves to do it ourselves, because something has to be done here, because this is a wonderful town, and these business owners need to flourish, they have things that will be bought, they have people coming from New York and down south and all over to come to that, to buy their items. So why is it that we don't have things pushed on the Chamber of Commerce website, the Tawnytown Facebook, all the Facebooks, because I have alerts when everyone posts something, and nothing's posted? For example, the Red Door Boutique is having their Super Saturday sale, it's not on the Tawnytown Facebook, it's not on Main Street's Facebook, it's not on the Chamber of Commerce Facebook, and that's not okay, because if we're going to advertise that we're a business-friendly community, why aren't we business-friendly? So I just wanted to put out there on the record that we've taken it upon ourselves to do this, because something needs to be done, because this is a town I want to raise my children in, this is where my fiance was raised, and we want this town to flourish. So we're going to do it ourselves if it's not done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. A question, have you, have you seen these?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
But it's still, like you said, not bringing the business.
Well, that's true.
Not bringing the business to town, it's not, you have to not just have a pronoun, you need to advertise, you need to push it, it's not getting done, and you're hitting walls and roadblocks, and it's not getting done. If you go into, for example, the list of all the businesses in town was last updated in 2013. I can name businesses right on Main Street that are not included in that. So if you look on our website and you want to visit us, you go to the Antrim and stay, you're not going to know what's in town. So how is that okay?
Part of a good business plan includes advertising and marketing, and that's, that's something I encourage every business owner to participate in. I know my own business up on the corner that's been there since 2002, not one dime, every dime that's spent on advertising comes out of my pocket.
Mm-hmm. But when we advertise that we're business-friendly and we're going to help, and it's, we have all these website outlets, it's good to also push the town events, because it helps.
Well, we help every way we can. The Tawnytown Record has quite a few advertisers that get help with their ads during those issues, so that's an advantage that we offer the downtown businesses, and I hope they appreciate that. I don't know how effective we could be by allowing Facebook advertising or Chamber of Commerce advertising, that's something that you'd not take up with Chamber of Commerce, I guess, but, I mean, it's, it's certainly not a problem, we just don't, we certainly don't have people on staff to coordinate advertising, if somebody wants to place an ad on our Facebook, they need to contact us, and we can talk about it. So I encourage them to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I had just finished attending the Maryland Municipal Convention in Ocean City, and I had a chance to talk to the Mayor of Thermont, and he said, "You and Tawnytown should be so happy, you have so many blocks of commercial businesses." He says, "We only really have a block and a half in Thermont, and Tawnytown is blessed with a lot of great storefronts, but we need, do need the kind of incentives to be able to, to develop those and rent those out, and the economic development to do so." So I agree with you, and I can, I can help in any way, I sure would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
We're the envy of some other towns, because we have so much potential here, with good leadership, without good leadership, without vision, that people perish.
Absolutely.
I, I really hope and pray for the day when entrepreneurs will come to town and establish a full-time retail business downtown, and not a part-time business that's open two or three days a week. I think the success will lie in consistency and extended business hours for the public as they, as they learn of the new businesses are downtown, so we want to do everything we can to encourage that, but it's a two-way street, it's not, not all one way. And again, I, I, you know, the government's here to support, it's not, not here to, you know, to initiate or to, to, to be the entrepreneur, it's the entrepreneur that needs to be the entrepreneur.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll support anything, I would say inequivalently, we'd support anything anybody brings to us, we'll, we'll do our best to promote and make sure that they're successful with it.
Absolutely.
Well, if I might just-
Are you part of the Main Street?
No, but I am involved in the church and involved in everything else. I've seen, walked down Main Street on a Sunday, and there's nothing.
There's a Main Street committee?
Absolutely, yeah, I've heard of it, and it's, there's nothing on their Facebook either, there's nothing on Tawnytown's.
Well, why don't you call Nancy McCormick and get on that committee, and then you can direct that committee in the way you want it, or the way you think it should be. That's where you're going to make your impact, because they do work with the business people, no matter what you hear others say, okay? There is a lot of interaction with the business community.
I'm telling you from, you know, a citizen, what I'm seeing from the outside.
That's what, that's what their job is, too.
Absolutely, I understand what you're saying.
I think you can make an impact there, if, if you want to get involved at that level.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that, I had brought a, when I was elected to the city council last year, brought a copy of a permit I was given, signed by the mayor, that allows parking permit number 43. I said there must be number, must be 40 other, three other free parking permits given. I had suggested at a previous meeting that we allow the ability to park, because I had several businesses on Main Street saying they feed meters all day long. If the town would, would allow that kind of a one-month parking pass for a certain fee, like an easy pass, I thought that was a great idea, I'd like to see that enacted. I thought that was a great idea. I'd like to see that enacted by the city council. So people can come into the desk downstairs and buy a permit, parking permit for a month that they could hang in their window, like the white van that you see back there has a permit hung in for certain elected officials and town people. I don't see why they should be above the law and not have to pay the parking permits, but there's a good idea. Maybe you can force the town to act on that idea.
Lot of good comments tonight. We're getting a little bit behind on our agenda. I'll take one more comment if anybody has it. All right, we'll move on then. I just want to make the traditional statement. Is there any conflicts of interest that may be pending for any council members regarding the agenda's item tonight?
No.
No, sir. Let me ask the question. Mr. and Ms. Adley asked, does anybody have any interest in the Cannabis LLC permit? I can't for the life of me understand why three of you will not repent and repeal your endorsement of a marijuana-growing facility in 20 Town. We want industry that employs honest people in 20 Town. I don't know why you would not repeal your attempt to bring a growing facility into 20 Town.
Are you saying they're going to hire not people that you approve?
No, I'm just saying.
Yes, you just said it.
If what she said is true, that they've approached the county for a permit for growing, that means this is really going to be happening, and it's going to be on the backs of Zambetti, Foster, and Wance for voting it in.
Well, that's okay. Just so it's not your name on it.
I don't want my name on it.
Well, that's good. So let's get on to the next subject, and you're missing on it. Remember that. You did not show the meeting. I don't know why we have to talk about this stuff every month. It's been over and over and over again. We've run this, we've talked about this, and the result's still the same.
Well, we, if I made a motion on Monday to repeal the letter of endorsement for Cannabis LLC, would I get a second on that? From anybody at this table?
I would second it.
All right, let's move on to regulations, ordinances, and agreements. For Monday night, we have the adoption of Resolution 2016-25, the water allocation for July 2016. Anyone have any comments on that? Also, on Monday night, we have an approval for the engagement letter for Draper McGinty, who is in process of beginning our annual audit. Anybody have any questions on that?
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor. In my order of agenda was a record of a closed meeting on May the 9th. I think that you might have skipped that as you went through the agenda today. There was a closed meeting that was held, and draft minutes are required. Any closed meeting, we get actually a draft copy of the minutes that are taken from that meeting. This meeting was May the 9th. It had to do with a property acquisition. The bottom of it says, "A motion by Wance and seconded by Foster to bid for a piece of property for $7,000, $10,000 for boring and testing." So I think that you should have mentioned that that is in our packet tonight, that closed meetings, always the minutes of those meetings are put in our record for review on Wednesday and adoption on Monday.
When I reviewed the minutes, I mentioned that there was minutes for the closed meeting.
It's right there on the agenda.
He listed all three meetings that we were going to be talking about for the minutes.
I didn't get a chance to comment on that. I just made my comment, so I'm pretty happy about that. I just want the public to know.
Again, you spent all the time that we had, a lot of that section talking about. The way we record the minutes, which we talk about every month, so. How about the city manager's report? Do you have anything for us tonight, Henry?
Well, not a whole lot. There were still some minor items left on the punch, for the wastewater treatment plant. The IT website bids were open and are being evaluated, and we should have a recommendation for that next month. We're still working on the 25-year capital improvements plans for both equipment and for projects. And that's all I got.
Questions for Henry?
Yes, I have a question. Do you have any knowledge of the fact that Cannabis LLC may have been approached the county for a permit or any progress on that application up here next to Flow Center?
I have no knowledge.
Okay. You haven't heard a thing. I'm not sure where that data came from, but that's very interesting.
Anyone else? Any questions on the departmental reports? Okay, let's move into the legal report, Charter Resolution 2016-01, referendum petition. Jay, would you like to address that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, a petition was received from the citizens regarding Charter Referendum 2016-01 at the middle of last month, and that petition has gone to the clerk's office to be verified, have all the signatures verified, to ensure that they are 20 Town residents and able to vote in 20 Town. And that's a bigger task than you would think. I thought it was a simple task and it could be done. And the problem is, there's several irregularities that have not been able to be rectified. The clerk's office, and when I mean the clerk's office, I mean the clerk, but she also has all the front office people working with her as well, spent two Saturdays and two evenings, plus other countless hours of overtime, to try to reconcile the signatures. And there's still some irregularities. So as I promised you at the last meeting, there needs to be a report issued from the clerk's office that says, these are the signatures that we received, these are the ones that are eligible, these are the ones ineligible, with very specific titles and names, so you know who it is, and this is the number of signatures that's left. And then you can determine whether or not the threshold has been met. Once you determine the threshold has been met, then you can determine whether or not a resolution is in order according to state law. At this point in time, with the irregularities that exist, we're unable to give you an accurate count. And so we're still working on that. The suggestion has been made to outsource it. That hasn't really worked because the clerk's office really needs to be the one that deals with it. So a list of the irregularities was given to me to run down and determine whether or not they could be reconciled. And as I thought it was a simple task until I started digging into it, it's not a simple task. So our goal is, again, to try to get it to you by the next council meeting so that you have something to act on. The legal standing of Charter Resolution 2016-01 remains unchanged. It's told until this issue is resolved. If this issue is resolved and the adequate number of signatures are on the petition, then it'll be to you to determine how you're going to deal with a referendum. If there aren't enough signatures on the petition, then the charter amendment goes into effect. So at this point in time, it's still told, which is what the law requires.
That's a good question of the attorney. You work for the city of 20 Town as the legal representative of the city of 20 Town?
Am I the city attorney?
Yeah. Is there any other city attorneys advising you on this?
I've asked several city attorneys of how to deal with these issues, yeah.
Yeah. Can you, can we get some data about that? We've requested to be present for the review of the signatures. I sent an attorney letter in asking, we believe it's a violation of the open meetings law. This is a, this is a legal petition challenge to an unconstitutional charter amendment, and we want to be present for the review of these signatures.
Okay.
And we've not been allowed to do that. Why is that?
Okay, well, let's start with, just talk about exactly what you said. The "we" is not the council, okay? Because I represent the city council. The "we" are citizens that are interested in this, okay? So we're clear about that. So citizens have asked through you to be present during the counting. And as I stated last month and the month before, this is not an open meeting or a legislative act. It's a ministerial act that's done by the city clerk on behalf of the council. You disagree with that, but that's irrelevant at this point.
That you've denied us the ability to be present for the striking of signatures is controversial.
It may be controversial in your mind, but it's well-settled law. That's how it's done.
In my mind.
Yes. And so as far as you're concerned, where you think that it's a ballot count, where there's people that are actually going to do that, it makes no difference. The end of the report, when the report comes out, will show exactly what's done. So therefore, you or the "we" that we're talking about, because this report goes to the council, the people I represent.
Yeah, I'm a member of the city council. Don't you remember? I was elected in May.
Yeah, and the issue that you talked about, when you keep talking about the "we" and the "us," puts you in an opposition to the city council and the interests of the city. And that's why when you said you had a legal opinion, that legal opinion isn't on behalf of the corporation of the city of 20 Town because that would have come from me, and you didn't get that opinion.
So you don't represent the city council, you represent the majority of the voters of the city council?
I represent the city corporation of 20 Town, and I take my direction by a majority act of the city. Right, that's how that works.
Well, did you receive the Dan Cox letter dated June the 13th that asked that we be present for the review of these petitions?
You mean "we" as in the citizens that sent it forward? Yeah, I received that letter, and I wrote back to him, which you're well aware because it was discussed at the last meeting, and I informed him that he was incorrect. First, he cited a statute that's been repealed, so I'm not really sure what he was getting at. And second, it doesn't violate the open meetings law. If you truly believe that you're violating the open meetings law, the forum isn't to keep arguing with the council, argue with me, file a complaint with the Open Meetings Compliance Board.
Well, I consider that.
And they will determine that, and then you can find out what they're not doing.
Unfortunately, the thing about the Open Meetings Compliance Board is they don't have any teeth. They just rebuke the town for breaking the law.
But basically, what you're doing is rebuking the town right now.
A separate grievance with, I've learned since last we met, with an entity that actually can penalize the town for breaking the law.
Well, that's your opinion, and.
No, no, that's what we were told. There's two ways to file a complaint when the open meeting law's been violated.
Yeah, and so the point that we were getting to at the end of your comment is, Dan Cox is your attorney.
He wrote here, he said, "On behalf of Councilman Don Fraser," and then he could proceed. So this letter was my interest in getting an honest review of these signatures.
Right, well, the honest review is done by the city. And despite what you believe and what you think, everybody that works here wants to uphold the law and do the right thing. They want to make sure the right thing is done. Not necessarily the thing that you want or that the majority want, but the right thing. And so your attorney and your opinion can force the issue as much as you want, but everyone here is going to make sure they do their duty. And you laugh at that.
No, because we.
The people that you're laughing at are the people trying to do it.
A pot-growing facility is the right thing for 20 Town?
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Well, then what you said is folly because just because a majority votes for something doesn't make it constitutional correct.
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
That's what you just said, that you only represent the majority, and that's the town, and therefore, that all they do has to be honest and good.
We've been here for 40 minutes.
Forty more.
And virtually 35 minutes of that has been dealing with stuff that had already been settled at previous meetings. That you're continuing to bring up over and over and over again.
Well, a lot of people.
Why can't you take "no" for an answer?
I don't, a lot of people cannot watch the Youtubes to find out what actually happens at the meetings or attend these meetings when they're not allowed to speak. So it's important that these things are discussed so more and more citizens know what's really happening in their city council.
Let's, any other questions for Jay?
No, when the report is issued to you, it will be accurate, and it will be 100% accurate. That's all I have at this point.
Questions for Jay? All right then, let's move into the monthly financial report. Anyone have any questions on the monthly financial report? There are none? How about the accounts payable? Anybody have any questions there?
I do have. If you give me a minute, I need to get it before me. Several things came to mind that I'd like to just ask the staff to address on the accounts payable. And if I don't get a chance to discuss anything on Mondays, we have to take the time on Wednesday. You can't limit debate on Wednesday and Monday, Mayor McCarron. I had taken a couple notes. I just wanted to ask questions about that, about those things. Aware that you go so quickly.
I've given you every opportunity to ask any question you want.
Okay, on page one of the report, there's 1603.40 for ads placed in the Baltimore Sun. And I wanted to know if Henry or someone could tell me, are these the kind of notices for foreclosure that we see? Or what other kind of ads do we place that would, this last month equals $1,600 worth of advertising? Are we advertising for positions, or are we advertising notices that are required? Or maybe it's the water rate increase that you all enacted against my will? Maybe you had to notify people of that. Can you explain why we bought $1,603.40 of ads from the Baltimore Sun?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, we're required to advertise by law in the newspapers. Something Maryland Municipal League has been fighting for many years is to try to allow us to publish these legal ads in other media. But so far, the legislature's not seen fit to do that, so consequently, we have to go to the newspaper with the widest variety of circulation in the area, which happens to be the Carroll County Times, which happens to be owned by the Baltimore Sun. That's why you see the Baltimore Sun's name there.
Okay.
And, believe me, we would not publish these if it wasn't required by law. Everything that we, everything we put in the paper is either, has to do with some, it's a legal notice that we have to publish.
No, I just wondered if you could tell me what things were done this last month.
Not just one thing. It's many different things.
Well, I was wondering if there's any recollection of what we've done this last month that would equal $1,600 worth of advertising. I'm not a coward. I'm not afraid to ask about these things before I vote on it.
And believe me, $1,600 isn't very much newspaper advocacy.
The answer to that is, the annexation petition that you all voted on last month is required by state law to be advertised four times at weekly intervals at a newspaper of general circulation. So that's what you have, is the annexation petition.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's all. Wanted to know what that was. The second question I have about the accounts payable is 7,000.
If you stop at the office, Don, I think we can show you what they were. I mean, it's not an issue. We can do that.
Well, I just won't get a chance to do anything on Monday to ask questions before I'm set up to vote yes on this.
You remember what the ads were?
Annexation, I think that would probably.
Oh, the annexation, voluntary annexation. Okay.
Now, the second question I have about the accounts payable is found on page six of the report. It's awful small writing. It says Eckers Lawn Service, 7,000. In the last month, 7,595. It says mowing and trimming. I thought city employees did most of the mowing of our parks. I did not know we were hiring for $8,000 mowing companies to mow in town. Can you tell me why and what and why I should not be concerned about that number?
Because did you forget that you approved the contract?
Yes.
You forgot that?
Approved the contract.
Well, I knew we had some people that helped us with mowing, but I didn't expect it to be, say, $8,000 worth of money because I thought, I thought literally, I've seen city employees mowing, so I thought mostly, most of the mowing and maintenance of parks, and I'm on the parks and wrecks, were done by city employees, but apparently, I'm surprised at this invoice amount.
And that's actually cheaper than if we did it ourselves. By outsourcing, it's a lot cheaper than us having all of that equipment and more manpower to get that done. Whereas we put our manpower on other projects.
So you're saying that the parks are not mowed by city employees. They're mowed by Eckers Lawn Service, is that what you're saying?
That's true, and again, that came before council, the contract, and you approved it.
It happens all so quick. On Mondays, Joe told me when he got elected, the Monday meetings only last 10 or 15 minutes. I, yes, 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 no, no, nobody can say a thing.
And Councilman Fraser, when I said that, I said that there were things on the agenda that were simple and straightforward. For example, water allocation resolutions, which don't require a great deal of discussion. It's not about shutting down debate. It's not about shutting down discussion. It's because there's one thing on the agenda that really is no discussion about.
Well, if there's one thing I've accomplished in a year being on the council, and that is we've had more discussion about the way that the public, this town spends the public's money. That's not the last thing I wanted to ask about, if this is my last chance to talk about it before a vote's going to be ran through on Monday. I wanted to ask about $11,000 refuse payment to the Carroll County Commissioners. I had testified on behalf of myself and as a councilman, not for the county commissioners to raise tipping fee. Is this $11,230 found on page eight, the tipping fee that we pay when Hughes takes trash to the landfill?
Absolutely.
I pled with the commissioners not to raise that tipping fee. And I was outvoted three to one, no, four to one by the current commissioners.
I wish you'd had better luck.
Yeah, well, I hope the voters vote this time. When I first was involved in the election, only 8% of the registered voters turned out to vote. I hope to change that in the coming elections.
Well, you are. It's going up again.
Well, that's a victory, Angela, don't you think?
No, it will not be a victory.
It's a wonderful thing when the people exercise their blood-bought right to vote.
Councilman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
A statement, really?
You can ask a question. I won't yield for a statement, but I'd yield for a colloquy.
It's a request, a kind request. Something like that, when you went before the commissioners, asking that they not raise it.
Yeah, if you.
I think in the future, when that happens, please come to the council because I'm sure we'd be happy to support you in doing that.
Well, I don't know. There wasn't very many people there. I was stunned. The trash haulers were scared to death of the county commissioners. They hardly will speak up because the county commissioners can hurt them. So governments can actually hurt people, and so people are very afraid of big, powerful governments.
And governments can hurt governments.
We had a lot of people wouldn't sign the petition because they were afraid of a punishment from the town.
Okay.
Did you have any other comments on the accounts payable?
I did.
Okay.
I think that that was probably the two big ones that I was unconcerned about. The seventeen, if that's the tipping fee, what's the seventeen thousand, six dollars on page fourteen? I guess that's tax withholding for local income taxes on the payroll. But payroll's done by, payroll's done by, not by county, city employees, the payroll's done by a private company that hired you.
It could be medical benefits.
KTS company. There's seventeen thousand, I guess that's just withholdings for county taxes from paychecks, but I could not tell from the way this is written here. It says, but it says next to it, Trevanion Terrace Tax Sale. What does that mean?
Do you remember, Mr. Mayor? You remember the closed session that you were at where you made the motion?
I don't talk about things that happened in the closed session.
Do you want the answer?
You just did. You just did.
All right.
What? No, I'm just talking about something that's in my packet, and that's my job as a city councilman.
Do you want the answer to this question?
Yeah, well, carry on, I don't know what the comment, what the little comment was about though.
I haven't, you didn't let me finish. So if you'd let me finish, if you recall the closed meeting that you just talked about, the minutes and things like that, you made the motion that we would go to a tax sale and try to make a bid to purchase a property, which is what the minutes you just talked about reflected, and that's the check that we needed for the deposit.
Okay, did we buy that piece of property?
We didn't get to buy, we bought the taxes, but we didn't get to buy, you don't get to do it that way.
Okay, I remember you talking about the ways that's done. Okay, very good, thank you for, I was just curious about those things before I vote yes on Monday.
Jay, am I correct that pretty much everything out of that closed meeting is now in the public?
Pretty much.
Yeah. Please exercise a little more restraint when talking about closed meetings. You just revealed everything from the closed meeting.
Now, this is public information, I don't know why you think, people think that this is not the town, the city doesn't belong to the people of the city. We have a right to know how you're spending the money. I'm doing a service to the town by asking questions about large payments made in the last month. That's all I'm doing. Y'all shouldn't be so offended and so defensive about that, that's good government.
Well, if you ever. Let's go back to page two. If you ever want to call me before the meeting and discuss any of those things, I'll be happy to let you know, because I sign all the checks.
That's good, we need to know that the mayor signs all the checks.
Are you on page two yet?
No, no, if you just give me a minute, Councilman, I'll join you on page two. I also had a question about the filter belts, but I thought I would be too long if I asked little questions, so that's just the big ones I had in mind.
Look at the first item on page two.
First item says FEMA flood payments, one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
For where?
It says flood insurance, two miles N of Maryland Route 140, Piney Creek, Maryland. You have a problem with that payment?
You have any idea of what that could be?
I have a sense of that, because my wife is county commissioner twice in the county. I know that we cooperate with FEMA on these flood plain management things. We have to have.
Two miles north of Route 140?
Uh huh.
That's nowhere near the city limits, in case you didn't notice that.
I did, I did notice that, but I.
Then why didn't you say something?
Shakespeare says, I think thou dost protest too much. I can only ask a few questions at these meetings regardless of how good the questions are.
And there is an answer for that, okay?
Why don't you tell us about it, you apparently do know about it, tell us to the public about it.
Because it's the old wastewater treatment plant. But you go picking on the things that.
I'm not picking, I'm doing my job. You should not be so defensive.
But they're things you should understand, it's.
I was denied the right to see the wastewater plant when I was elected, unlike other councilmen. Y'all were unhappy I was elected, don't you remember?
Anyone else have any comments on the accounts payable? All right, let's move into sidewalk signs. Joe, you asked this, they put on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I met with a couple of business owners over the last couple of weeks, all of them very supportive of the provisional state of enforcement on store merchandise on sidewalks that Councilman Wance had brought before us a few months back, and everybody loves that. They think it's fantastic that stores can put out merchandise on sidewalks. And one of the things that they would like us to include at this point would be small A-frame signs that denote what store the sign is in front of, as a way to help drum up customer, or drum up patronage of the store to increase customer turnout. Basically, the thinking is that, you know, you have stores that are maybe around the corner, or maybe you have stores that have trees in front of them, and they're not necessarily always visible from the street. But a small A-frame sign on the sidewalk might help alert people that, hey, there's a store here. It might entice more people to come in to patronize a store. And the hope was that we could include these small A-frame signs, because right now, if I remember correctly, you would have to go through a process in order to get the sign, and I think it's a couple hundred dollars, no, it's not?
No.
Okay, could you?
I believe that the temporary A-frame signs are permitted, as long as they're not obstructing the right-of-way.
Okay.
And as long as it's, if the business, whatever street the business fronts, they're permitted to have a temporary sign that is put out when they open and taken inside when they close. That's currently permitted right now.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah, if you recall, Mr. Mayor, when Brad made the wise decision to move forward with the provision to allow sidewalk sales, I seconded that and voted for it, the people since then have taken it as though those A-frame signs were permitted because they've been using them since then without any fear. I don't think there's any concern about those, unless you've heard differently, Councilman Bigley, I think.
Well, notwithstanding.
There's, I know there's some concern about the sign being on the business property. Signs placed on other people's property are, I think, restricted.
Correct.
And that could be part of what you're at.
And that may be some of the confusion. If a business doesn't front a road that they wanted to advertise on, then unfortunately, the code does not permit that. They could, in theory, work with someone who does front that road and perhaps get it there. But that's really, I mean, the code exists that they're allowed to have those temporary signs.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, was there some concern that you heard about that being restricted by the town?
Well, the concern was that, you know, putting up the A-frame signs would be found to be illegal.
Is there a size limit? I disagree with that, I mean, I know when we did the sign ordinance, that was one of the things we did away with. But, you know, what goes around comes around, I mean, you live and learn, you find out what works and you adapt to it. So if it's, you know, if this is a benefit for the businesses, we need to find a way to accommodate it.
It's good, well, that's good to get the word out.
Is there a size limit on them, on the signs?
I don't know that there's a size limit on the A-frame signs, no. But I know it has to do with whether it obstructs the right-of-way, whether it's a sidewalk or what it be. If it creates problems at the square, you know, the Red Cross put up those signs where you can't see around the corner, that's a problem. If it violates ADA, that would become a problem. But overall, I don't believe there's any sign restraints, any size restraints to the A-frames, no. Is there a particular business that wants to put one out and has concerns that we can discuss, like extenuating circumstances?
I, there is one particular business, I'm not quite sure if I'm at liberty to mention.
Okay.
Just because I, you know, I wasn't sure. But basically, the business has set back from the sidewalk a little bit, and they would like to put the sign out on the sidewalk, but they're unable to do so because the business doesn't front the sidewalk.
Right, okay, you and I are thinking of the same business then.
Probably.
I think that can come before Planning Commission for a little more discussion then, to figure out if maybe there's a workaround for it. Because that's, that business is in a very unique location. The property does front a street, but the business portion does not, if I'm not mistaken. Do you see where I'm getting at? Okay. But I can take that to Planning Commission and have a talk about that. So maybe, I'll try to get in touch with the business owner and give a little more detail about that as well.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
That's good.
Next, we have a park sign bid. And last I remembered about this is we were taking this to the planning and zoning commission to get their opinion on it. You have a report for that, Brad?
Here's what I can tell you, honestly, the city council, I don't believe can make any action on this because as of right now, the city code does not permit this sign in any zone, let alone an open space zone. So I don't believe that we can approve the bid since we can't erect the sign at the moment. The Planning Commission is working on some recommendations for that. I know I passed out some information to the Planning Commission. They are reviewing it now, and we'll kind of keep updated on that. We want to find a way to make these types of signs work in the city. So right now, I don't believe the city council can approve this since right now it can't even be erected. So I don't think we should approve the purchase on it.
Councilman, may I ask, I mean, what sort of process would we have to go through at this point? I mean.
Well, it's a sign ordinance, which is a thorn in a lot of people's sides. I think even the city attorney skips meetings when we talk about signs.
Fun.
Yeah.
But necessary.
But necessary, and they're probably more fluid than most other codes in the city, just because times change so dramatically. Basically, once the Planning Commission comes up with our recommendations, we will take it to the city attorney, who will then draft it in the appropriate legalese, and then it's up to the council to pass or not as they see fit. But, and of course, you can throw out everything the Planning Commission does and do whatever you want anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about this. This was put on our, this wasn't in my packet, but it's here on the table with two bids, one from Patterson Sign Company, one from Kirkley Signs for forty-eight thousand four hundred dollars and forty-three thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and forty-five cents. I'm familiar with the fact that the Memorial Park sign has been broken for some time. There's a big piece of plexiglass you lift up and the rivets are there. It's difficult, they're loose, and it's difficult to change that sign. The sign that was, that I had heard about, which was a welcome addition to a gateway for our town, was an electronic sign, and it, and it allowed the Wrexham Parks Director to put up multiple messages on that. And my understanding was that the sign was discussed at the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted no on the sign already. Is that true?
No, that's incorrect.
There was no vote taken by the Planning Commission?
No.
And why would you say it's against your wishes as a councilman to go ahead and approve a sign that would replace the broken sign at Memorial Park?
Because right now, we don't permit such a sign in that zone. It doesn't matter what the Planning Commission says right now, our existing code does not allow that type of sign.
Well, what code are you talking about? Because we did, we discussed at the last meeting electronic sign code. And we talked about adopting an ordinance that we have yet to adopt, I believe.
Correct, because we don't have an ordinance.
It's not on the agenda, even though we discussed it at length at the last meeting. I asked questions about open and closed signs, does anybody remember that?
Yeah.
We talked about that.
Yeah, and what we decided was to allow.
So that law could not be the law that prevents a sign in that zone. So what law does prevent the sign to replace the broken sign?
The existing city code. What we did last month when we voted was we, we directed the Planning Commission to go forward and come up with ways to allow electronic message display boards. Because right now, the only place that they're allowed is general business districts, which is why Wance has one, CBS has one, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Okay, right now, open space, Memorial Park, or downtown, or R-20,000, or whatever other zone, they're not permitted. So we're trying to find a way to permit them, that way these things can happen. The city's not the only people that want a sign right now. The fire department would like a sign like this as well. The elementary school would like a sign like this.
I've heard that, I'm aware of that.
So we're taking the responsibility to make this happen, but it's just not, it's not a light switch. It's not a yes, no, let's do it. There's a city code that has to be altered to allow that.
So I think if you listen to very carefully what Councilman Wance has said, the prohibition against the sign being upgraded to electronic sign, you say, is found in the law that governs Project Open Space. When I was a boy, we would come up.
No, 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 no. You completely perverted what I said.
Ben, what did you mean when you said open space?
Open space is a zoning term.
Okay.
That our parks fit into, if you look on here, everything that's green.
I know that.
Okay, well.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, please stand up here.
They're certainly open spaces. But what prohibition is there in law about upgrading to electronic sign if we have not adopted the sign ordinance?
Open space is different from what he's referring to. In our zoning, these green areas are referred to as open space. It restricts what can go on in them and what cannot. It has nothing to do with what you referred to, that's going off in a completely different tangent. It's simply a zoning term.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to continue with this discussion. Because my understanding is this sign may have already been purchased because it was in the budget last year and may be actually in the garage here. Is the sign, it has taken delivery of this sign yet?
It has not been purchased.
And it's not, have not taken delivery of that sign? Okay, okay.
That's why, that's why this is here.
Yeah, well, that's what it looks like, but I just want you to say it on the public record. The sign is alleged to be too big, so has that been discussed at the Planning Commission?
There has.
Okay, and I'm trying to find out, maybe I can, does the county attorney answer questions from minority members?
You'd have to call them and find out.
Okay, you're right there, you work for us. I want to know what.
You said the county attorney, I thought you were talking about.
I know, sorry, the city attorney, I'm sorry, I misspoke. What provision, if we have not adopted the, I just want to know what provision in law, if we have not adopted the electronic sign ordinance yet, prohibits, let's say, the middle school or the fire company from going forward to assign right now? What provision, is it, it's not in our zoning, I couldn't find it in the zoning ordinance, maybe you can change aluminum.
Right, that's the point, I mean, just to cut to the chase. Electronic signs are not in the zoning ordinance, and therefore, they're not allowed. So the zoning sign ordinance that we're talking about is to put into the zoning ordinance a provision that would allow electronic signs. That's what you're saying.
Why don't I ever ask a question like a good lawyer before I know the answer to it? And so I was sold earlier that the prohibition might be found in a different part of the law. And you're saying it's just through the absence of it being allowed, it's automatically disallowed?
That's right, that's how zoning works.
Right. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear you say, thank you for that.
Could I ask you what makes you think you are the minority member of this council?
Well, I get out and work it all the time.
Why do you keep saying it?
Y'all raise the water rates against mine.
That doesn't make you the minority member.
Put in marijuana pot-grilling facilities.
You're not a minority member, you're one of us.
I'm on the minority often.
You know, I know your people keep saying you're a minority member.
You've never had a Baptist preacher on the city council.
You've always advertised as a minority member. You're not, Don, consider yourself one of the group.
Thank you so much.
Not as a minority member all the time.
That's a good.
That is not right.
Kind thing to say.
Yeah.
You're so kind.
You do it all the time, Don. All right. Even when you're trying to sell petitions, you do it. Any other new business to come before?
Yes, I have something. One day, I intend to advance a discussion, I want to talk to you all about it tonight, or I probably won't get the votes on it. We had a situation in the last year that I think is scandalous. What happened was the batteries ran out in a lot of people's houses. And when the person would go by with a reader and not get a reading, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, I don't know exactly what happened next, but what they would do is come back and estimate bills. And we've worked through quite a number, and I know staff has spent a lot of time on the people had grievances about that. I've been in contact, and I, there's a whole litany of emails that go back six months on one particular property owner, Michael Atherton, that is owed one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents because he was billed at the wrong rate. I'm going to make, in order to put this behind us, I'm going to make a motion on Monday to just cut a check and pay him for the difference. He has argued, I think effectively, with all the city councilmen about the fact that he was billed the wrong amount because he was billed the amount on new rates instead of old rates. And so I think it's a small amount of money, and Michael Atherson is not going to give up on this, we're going to end up in circuit court on it. And so I am going to make a motion to go ahead and pay him. I think he requested one hundred and forty-six dollars in overcharges, but when I calculated it, I only got one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents in overcharges.
We would not cut a check.
I know, but I would like the council to direct you to cut a check to put this, this person was injured by the.
I just said is we will not cut a check.
Well, if the council directs you to do it, you work for the city.
You still don't understand.
Uh huh.
That would be a credit to the account.
Well, he asked for credit, but it hasn't happened yet. And this email that I have here is January 4th, I have emails that go back to you and he arguing about this all the way back to December 10th, and he's still not been given any credit for the fact, I think he's made a good case that he was injured by the battery being dead, and the amount of injury is only one hundred and forty-six if you take his number, or one hundred and thirty-nine ninety-nine. And I'd like the council to just direct you to put that behind us. I think it'll go away if we just do right by that. It was really the city's error to allow the situation to grow and wax worse and worse with dead batteries. I think we've worked through that, and that's one of the great accomplishments of the last year.
I'd like to speak to that. And the reason I'd like to speak to that is because I'm the one that's been working on that list of who is getting what refund or what credit. that's been working on that list of who is getting what refund, or what credit. We're doing okay.
I thought we'd made a lot of progress on that.
I've made a lot of progress on that. It is an extremely complex process, and one that I am going over to make sure that it is 100% accurate. However, if we simply go and give him a hundred and thirty-nine dollar credit, that, that may not be what the actual math is.
Well, I think that he'd be happy with that. Justice delayed is justice denied.
I'm sure he would be pleased as punch with that.
And he is, I've read all these interactions, because I've been CC'd on some of them, and then he's, has sent me actual copies of the bill, and it's very clear to me that because the battery was dead, he was overcharged about this amount.
Councilman, I think he would be absolutely pleased with that. However, he needs to receive the credit that is appropriately due to him, which is how it's going to be figured out for everybody in the exact same method. We cannot let people tell us how much they're getting back.
So, I, I've looked at the numbers, and I think he's right on this. So, you're saying that he may get more or less because of your work that you're doing? Is that what you're saying?
It could be, and my work will have every single detail.
I don't think, I think he'd settle for this amount. He says in a recent email that, that it's been going on now for six months with no response from city government, and so that he mentions his recourse...
Do you know how many hours I've put into this project, councilman?
Well, I think we had a mess, and I think it's a scandal. And I'm glad to see the town facing up to the losses. We had a former mayor come in, talk about his bill, and other people. There's been a lot of people come in and tell stories about the trouble, and we've worked through that, and I think a lot of credit belongs to the staff for, for facing this. This is one that's a particularly frustrating one for this gentleman.
I understand.
And I think that it's reasonable to refund him that money, based on his argument. Makes a perfect good decision. We ought to put that behind us.
I agree. And I will check, I will check the appropriate math to make sure that that is what he's actually owed. Just like everybody else will get exactly what they are owed.
Now, how did you get in charge of doing that project?
Because I volunteered to do it.
I don't remember doing that as a council.
Councilman Wance volunteered to do this.
I took it on so that it did not cost the city money to do. Because I don't like wasting city money. So, I've put over a hundred and thirty hours in this project, along with my full-time job and my family, to work on this. And it has been plagued with issues that I've had to work through and to make sure that it is completely accurate. So, to say that there's no action, you're completely wrong.
No, I didn't say there was no action. I said, this man is frustrated, and I, and I think he's correct about this. Did you say earlier that you would look at this before Monday?
I'd be happy to look at it before Monday.
Okay, then, and I think we owe Mr. Wance a round of applause for...
No, no, no.
In order to bring this to an end, that's where we'll close. I think, at the very least, we need to correspond with this individual and tell him what we're doing. If he hasn't heard anything from city management, city government for six months, I agree with Councilman Frazier, that's not acceptable.
Well, there's a couple...
We need, we need to let him know what's going on.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring that up, because I was going to talk about it on Monday.
All right, any, anything else on the new business? Anything on the old business? All right, let's move on to public comment.
I have a new business matter.
I'm sorry?
I would have had another new business matter. I had two things, that, one was the Atherton injustice that I wanted to talk about, about the water bill. And the second one had to do with the, with the open meetings law. If I can just take a minute of that. This, I, I've searched and searched the accounts payable for why there's been a change in the production of the Tonty Town Record. I own a P.O. box for the Tri-District Republican Club, P.O. Box 520, and for the first time ever, this paper has arrived in my P.O. box, and it's arrived at every address I know. Did we pass a bill that allows the mayor to have franking privileges? Because we, this is the first time in a long time that we've gotten... These used to be available for distribution, but now they're being sent out. I was trying to find out, it says, it says bulk rate, U.S. postage paid, to every property owner?
Every, every property owner in 21787.
And that's a change of policy since I've been on the council.
No, you voted for that when you passed the budget.
No, no, I've had the P.O. box for several years, and I've never gotten a copy of the Tonty Town Record in my P.O. box and these other addresses until this time. So, there's been, what?
Take that up with the postal office.
No, I want to know how much money, more money we're spending. China has a government paper, and Russia has a government paper, and Tonty Town apparently has a government paper now. I put a ad in this paper for our trip to the National Memorial Day Parade, but I was never sent an invoice. So, apparently, the ad businesses that advertise are invoicing without cost, because I was not billed for that. So, is it true?
That sounds like a great support for businesses.
It does, we had a person come to talk about that today, that perhaps that...
Nonprofits don't pay for ads.
In your mayor's message, it says this, it says, "We passed a city budget with no tax increase again this year, regardless of what you may have heard, and despite lingering, the lingering recession." You know, I, I distributed three hundred flyers that talked about the shift of three hundred and twenty-nine, and I have a copy for everybody here today, the shift of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars into the water sewer. This is the first year, and I've been watching this for many years, we didn't have to raise water rates at all, because of the growth we've allowed, the infrastructure change, the growth we've allowed. Here is the information about the shift of that. Plus, we voted, I voted to not raise the, to, to hold the constant yield, but I was outvoted on that, and about sixteen thousand, we were told by, Mr. Vought was, we raised the taxes sixteen thousand. So, it's, I think that if you're going to put things like this, like a candidate would do, you have to have an authority line in order to do that, if you're going to make statements that contradict the actual fact of what the budget is.
You're just completely wrong.
No, how can you say something that, that's not true in the, in the paper, when we already brought this out to the public, and imply, I guess it's just a shouting match to see whether or not you're telling the truth, or we're telling the truth that we found in the budget about four hundred thousand dollars worth of tax increases?
Who's "we"? You keep saying "we". We are not...
I'm not alone in being upset with the way you run the city.
You keep saying "we".
We had no trouble getting thirteen hundred people to sign the petition.
Yeah, right. Don't let me get on that one, okay? All right, well, we're moving on here.
So, I, I would protest the sending of the Tonty Town Record as a government newspaper. I didn't think that's what the Tonty Town Record was designed to do, to be a government propaganda sheet.
It's a newsletter, is what it is.
Well, we allow Republican clubs to put articles in there, and they're full of just the same amount of stuff as that.
Well, we protest, you should reconsider whether the town, the city is wealthy enough to have a, have a, a piece of propaganda that goes out like this.
A Tonty Town Record that has advertisements for our local businesses that you want to get rid of now?
No, no, I just questioned this one sentence that says, "We passed a city budget with no tax increase again this year." That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Councilman, if I remember correctly...
Thank you for pointing that out. You've said it, you've said it fifty times, that's enough.
It's not enough.
Yes, it is.
Just don't say something publicly that's not true. It's embarrassing to the council, when you can read the budget and see it didn't happen that way.
Forget it. Again, Don, your, your concept of things is just so far out. I mean, just don't understand where you come from.
I've been watching government for a long time, and I know...
It's like you live in outer space someplace.
Figures don't lie.
Now, if, Mayor, if...
I'm, I'm about done with, with this, right now. So, we're going to have, we're going to have some time for public comment on anything that was on the agenda. And again, I'm going to hold you to three minutes. If any, and if anybody has any comments to make on items we've discussed tonight already, they're welcome to come to the mic.
I'm Robin Frazier from Bentley Street. I would just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the referendum. Can you at least tell us if you've decided what 20% is, or is that part of what you're having trouble figuring out? Do you, do you know total numbers, so that you know what 20% of the registered voters are? Like, is our goal number eight hundred and fifty? Is it eight hundred and eighty? Or do we not for sure know what that goal number is?
I'm, I'm very familiar with what it needs to be, but this isn't a question-and-answer period. Unless you want to turn it into a question-and-answer period.
Okay, well, I will just say, then, that, that we turned in 1,175 signatures. Our belief is that 20% is somewhere around 860 or so. So, there's quite a spread, and it would take a very large number of signatures being disqualified for that referendum not to go forward. Thank you.
Anyone else care to make any comments?
Catherine Adelaide, Nine Courtland. I'm here as a citizen, and also as the contact person for the referendum petition. And, Mr. Gull, you mentioned several irregularities have arisen. It clearly stated what I, on the cover page, that, you know, I'm the contact person, so I haven't been contacted about any of these irregularities. And there is a petition committee, and somebody who's much more versed and who's a numbers person, I'm really not, who probably could answer a lot of those questions. So, I do invite you to take advantage of the expertise that was involved with this petition, so that it doesn't unnecessarily skew the numbers and end up in a, you know, lawsuit in court. I think everybody would like to avoid that. Secondly, I mean, as far as I can tell, someone tell me differently, this is the first citizens' referendum petition in the history of this town. That's newsmaking. I mean, that's a lot, that's more citizens than came out to vote in the last election. And I know you were very excited about the last election, but I'm going to be hoping that that many come back out and vote again. And we were aware, we didn't have time to, some of them, of course, weren't on the list, but we didn't, we just were trying to get the thing in on time. So, we were aware that some, there were people who wanted to, to put their name on, and we had to verify it later. Anyway, this is the legal petition form, and I want to read it. "The undersigned voters petition the city council of Tonty Town for a referendum on proposed charter amendment, CR 21601, and request that the proposed amendment be submitted to referendum of the qualified voters of Tonty Town." That's it. Every single person read this, and then signed it. And their signature really is the law. Those are, you know, if, if the verification of signatures were an administrative function, it would be in the nature of a clerical act and have no effect on existing law. Clerks do clerical things all the time, it doesn't impact existing law. "In this case, however, the validation of the signatures will have a legislative effect, either setting the stage for a legislative enactment of a referendum, or enacting the charter immediately, amendment immediately", which is why, you know, we had given plenty of opportunities to, you know, do this in a public setting. Because, see, you're the legislative body. You're not, you're not, and you're not. You're not the legislative body. You're the legislative body, and the law says the legislative body has to do this function, because it's a legislative function. So, even if you delegate it, or call it ministerial, it doesn't change its nature as a legislative function, because it has the force of law. The way you evaluate those signatures, and I'm glad to hear you say you're taking it so seriously and that you're taking your time. I really am glad to hear that. The biggest thing I think the petition committee is concerned about is that our mayor twice invited citizens to come in and remove their names from a legal petition. Sir, you have no legal authority to have any names removed from this petition, and you're bringing a lawsuit to the...
Your three minutes is up.
And your dream has come true. I have filed an open meetings complaint. You'll be getting a copy of it. Yeah, I hope that you won't retaliate against Councilman Frazier, I'm sorry.
Anyone else have any comments?
You didn't know about it, but an open-meeting law complaint has been filed for this.
Passan, please sit down.
Any questions?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions of the city manager, if I could. Is it true that you opened the town the day of the, when the, when my taxes were due on a Saturday, I had until Monday to file the taxes? But we had heard that you opened the city office on Saturday for the first time in a long time, just to shorten the number of days we could get petition signatures. Did the city office open that day?
Yes, it did.
And why did we do that?
Accommodate the petition.
Well, we'd had till Monday to file, to the close of business on Monday, if you hadn't opened on Saturday.
Fortieth day was Saturday, so we accommodated it.
Okay, I just want people to know you did that. How many people came in on that day? Did you were the only one to come in, or did everybody forced to come in on that day?
No, not everybody came in.
Okay, I just wanted people to know that happened.
One of your people came to the door and tested to see if we were upstairs.
Oh, I had people come. I check your board all the time, because I don't think we get adequate notice of meetings. So, I do that all the time. I've been busy about being the city councilman.
Barbara, did you add something?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how many people that would sign that petition would willing to testify in court that they were misled?
I expect to be a lot of them.
And they signed that. And I just wonder how many people it would take before the courts would throw the whole thing out?
And anyone else?
Jackie Jones, and I live on Clubside. Am I not correct that a voter's list is really the county's ownership or the state's ownership, and it cannot be had unless you are a candidate and you pay for it?
I can speak to that. Can I speak to it?
I would like our legal counsel to speak to that, since he's...
Since I bought a voter list.
The city, the city is, the city can get a copy as well.
Okay, but I know when I was a candidate, I had to pay for it, and I could not let it go out. I also know when I was chair of the Democratic organization that I could not let that copy go out, except to certain people, and I had to sign my fifteen grandchildren over to them, so... So, I, I think to put that to bed, that's the reason it's being checked legally and so forth. Am I not correct? While I'm up here, I got a couple of suggestions. I think when somebody runs for an office, regardless of whether it's a dog catcher or it's President of the United States, he should at least study the charter and codes and familiarize themselves with these items that will come up. You can't remember all of them, that's true. But as far as the mowing business, that was brought up a year ago, because I happen to be here, for the last two years, I've attended almost every monthly meeting. Well, two monthly meetings, really. And that was brought up and discussed amongst the council as to who they should select to do the mowing. So, that has been on the agenda and so forth, recently.
Thank you, Jorgan. All right, any, one more?
Barbara Cook, again. I just have a question. Whatever happened to the "Welcome to Tonty Town" sign that maybe five or six years ago, it was discussed? At one time, Sheetz offered to give us one. At one time, the State of Maryland offered to give us one. I still don't see one.
What's the update on the entry signs?
Well, the Sheetz thing, the sign, they, they have, there is a piece that's their plot of land that they've, they've reserved for us.
I don't see anything standing there that says, "Welcome to Tonty Town."
Well, that's because the, the monument keeps getting redesigned.
Okay, all right, well, that's cool.
And it is up to the city to purchase said monument.
But I thought the State of Maryland said they would pay for one.
No, the State of Maryland doesn't want us to have one at all.
Who?
The State of Maryland doesn't want us to have one at all.
Okay, I guess I...
That's why they made us take down the one on Frederick Street.
Okay, I thought it was going to be in the circle. Okay, all right, my hearing must be really off. Okay, all right, my hearing must be really off.
All right, thank you very much, everybody, for your participation tonight, but before we adjourn, I have some sad news. Prior to the meeting tonight, I was handed a letter from Councilman Zambetti resigning his seat. I'm very sorry to have that happen. Angelo has been a great asset to this community and to this council and I, I, I hope that